All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 5th, 2024 School Board Meeting. We did it, called the meeting to order at 5:00 and went in and did some non-public business at 5:00 and 5:30. We are now out of that and we recessed for a little bit and we're back with you live here. And it's 6:05. I'm going to ask that you please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sharon, you were throwing me off.
You're a lag from the Arctic Circle there.
For those of you that are here with us tonight and those of you viewing from home, Mrs. Johnston is joining us via phone tonight. We also have a public hearing to hold tonight, sort of in conjunction here with our regular meeting. I will read, I'll call the public hearing to order and read to you the purpose of the public hearing this evening. "To the inhabitants of the town of Farmington, you are hereby notified that pursuant to New Hampshire RSA 198:20-C2 that on August 5th, 2024, at 6:00 PM, the Farmington School Board will be conducting a public hearing for the purpose of the district's proposal of expending funds from the Farmington School District Bus CRF Capital Reserve Fund for the purchase of a school bus invoiced at $93,400. That public hearing will take place at Farmington High School, 40th Ave., Farmington, New Hampshire, in the library." For those of you that have watched previous meetings, we initially tried to purchase this bus with the use of ESER funds. ESER is getting, I guess, a little more strict in its final year and that request was denied. We do have enough funds in the CRF for buses. We are agents to expend, but in order to do that, we have to hold a public hearing. So if anybody wants to speak to this, either during public participation or somebody comes in later to the meeting and decides they want to speak to this while we're still having the public hearing, you're more than welcome to do so. I probably will adjourn the public hearing right around the same time that we adjourn the meeting. At this time, I will ask for any public participation.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Abbott. I'm the union president for the paraprofessionals of the Farmington School District. I'm here with concerns about the board voting to allow Mrs. Sliva to go to outside agency to hire paras. This is an ongoing, this is going to cost the district an astronomical amount of money and it is anywhere from two to four times the salary of the paras already employed by Farmington. The average total cost of employing the paraprofessionals employed last year was $30,281. The cost of employing a contracted para will be at least $55 an hour at 185 days, six and a half hours a day at $66,000. The district will spend at least 100% more on a contracted para than in spends on a para employed by the district. This is bad for taxpayers and for current employees, but it gets worse. Anybody who is hired as a contracted para is prohibited from working for the district, usually for a year after they stop working for the contracting company. So imagine that a fantastic para who lives in Farmington gets hired by the company. They work for the contractor because the contractor advertised wages over $20 an hour to start. The para decides she wants to work for the district so she can get medical insurance. She, they can't. Why? The district agreed not to hire the person directly. The person agreed not to take a job working directly for a district. That's how contractors work. So in addition to paying twice as much, we're also making it harder to hire people directly. We're taking potential candidates and making them ineligible to work here. We'll never fill the positions. There are other reasons not to contract out. The contractor will be offering $20 to $30 an hour for jobs at Farmington pays $15 to $20 an hour. Anybody currently making $15 an hour will quit and take job for the contractor. This happened in Wakefield last year. If they don't quit and start working for the contractor, you'll have contractors working side by side with district employees. People will not know what the contractors are supposed to do and what district employees are supposed to do. We may, we must do a professional development portfolio and intend, and attend professional development the district provides. According to what I heard at the school board meeting on the 22nd, Mrs. Sliva stated that the person would be doing PD through the company. How is this fair and how will they know what the schools are doing if they don't have to attend hours? Well, district employee is going to need to train the contractors even though the contractors make more money. That will create a lot of friction. It's more work for administrators and it creates more chances to waste money. Will contractors get sick pay? How would they be sure the company isn't making Farmington pay for the contractors that didn't work? I bet there are numerous other downsides that I didn't even think of yet, but the district and the taxpayers will have to deal with them. I understand we're short staffed. We need to come up with a different solution. Why can contractors fill positions when the district can't? Two reasons. They try harder to find people and they pay more. Here are some things the district could do to fill the positions without contracting out. Try harder to fill the positions. You're putting a lot of time and energy into contracting out, but we aren't doing the right things to fill the openings. Please look for the jobs by looking at Indeed and ZipRecruiter. The jobs aren't posted on Indeed and ZipRecruiter, the postings are incorrect. The potion should also state that the school is willing to pay for the second fingerprint and certification. Someone looking for work might also look at the district website. Nothing on the website say, says that we're trying to fill positions. Put up a big notice on the district website and each school's website saying that the district is hiring. Sometimes, parents of students and former students work for the district. They find out about the jobs in the word of mouth. The district could put signs up in front of the buildings and around town saying that the schools are hiring. Every school has a big sign. Why don't they just say, "Now hiring paraprofessionals and teachers"? The union would be willing to talk about offering sign-on bonuses to current employees who recruit others to fill off open positions. This is happening in other districts. I have an example of how it might work right here. Trying harder to fill positions is one thing the district should do right now. Another thing we should do is negotiate ways to pay better. I know we just finished negotiation, a new contract, but we would be willing to talk about offering hiring bonuses as long as current employees also get the bonus. If you offered a 3,000 hiring bonus, you could spend another 27 on bonuses for current staff without spending more than the contractor would cost. I feel that if you allow this to happen, then this will become the new norm for our district and this is not the direction we should be going in. Also, our NEA representative is currently going to need to file an unfair labor practice charge because you're hiring outside people to do work that union employees already perform. I do think there are other solutions to this problem. Please do the things I recommend. Please also research, research out to me, reach out to me just so you can try to solve the problems together. Thank you for letting me speak and I hope this changes your mind to this matter or I will have to take further action. And I have the cost out for you, what it costs for each employee already makes and how much it's going to cost out. And I also have, just if you want to have this reference back at.
You have copies first?
Yes.
Yeah. Those are some good suggestions. Thank you, Lisa. Watch yourself. Thank you.
Sharon, do you want a copy so you can see for me to give to you when you return?
Yeah, could you do that for me?
Yep.
Mr. Doig, to your knowledge, have we contracted with anyone as of yet?
No.
Okay. With the board's permission, I'd like to suggest that we hold off on contracting with anyone. My understanding is we're going to kind of explore it as that was presented to us, but let's hold off on moving into any kind of formalized contract until we can digest this and really put our heads together on Lisa's suggestions because they are good ones. Thank you. Anyone else for public? All right, hearing done, we're going to, I'm going to jump ahead. Chief, sorry, chief. I know you wanted to get going early here because you have another commitment at the Selectment Board's meeting. So I'm going to jump down to the SRO report and Chief Orlando is here with us tonight.
Thank you for moving us up.
Yep. You might want to just scoop that a little closer to you. Holy moly.
A little light reading when you're bored.
How many trees?
Just a couple.
It's appreciated. It's a lot of work, I get it.
Is this a fake booklet?
It's a little bit.
Yes, but it's always a good one. Very thorough.
Okay. So obviously, you guys aren't going to have time to like flip through that right now, but if you guys think of any questions, I think all of you have our email. Feel free to shoot us an email if you have any questions about anything that you see in there. There's a couple of different sections which go over our numbers and breakdowns of our calls and then it gets more into community policing with the SRO program where I have a proposal of a heyday activity for us as well as a continual growth proposal for our goals for next year and things that we would like to do. So yeah, so if you guys, while looking through that, have any questions, you, you all have our emails. Feel free to shoot us any questions that come up or anything like that.
Thank you.
And then, could you pass down? These are the monthly report for them. Yeah, however you want. You just pass it down the line. That's our July monthly report.
This is an email, right?
Yeah.
And if you guys have any questions? Yeah, no, it's fine.
I was just saying like how behaviors tend to spike before vacations and holidays. Like you always see.
Yeah.
I just love like the proactive incentive approach. Sorry. That's as far as I got.
So this is just basically summer school activity?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, that is summer school activity and staff that's here even on like days that kids aren't. So if anything comes up on a Friday or an alarm or anything like that, that's essentially what it looks like, summer school and Fridays.
Any questions from the board on this report?
No, I was just going to say, I know that we've got the suggestions for the changes and updates on the truancy policies. I know, you know, we've kind of been looking over those. Nicole has, so Nicole and Sharon on the phone, sorry. I don't know if we told you that, she's on the phone.
You're fine.
Have been kind of working through policies and stuff. So I know we have that kind of on the agenda for later tonight and going forward and we, that we want to kind of get that obviously buttoned up before this school year starts, so.
While we have them here, could we jump to it?
Yeah.
Sure we can.
Okay.
We can do whatever we want.
Sharon, are you good with that?
Is that, is that okay, folks?
Yeah.
Since you're here.
Sharon, oh, can you hear her, Sharon?
Yes. I, it's breaking up a little bit, but I'm hearing it. This is the same report I read on the, in our folder, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we're just going to.
That I understand.
Yeah, we're just going to go ahead and just skip up because they have to scoot out to this, another meeting. So just on the truancy stuff. So I told you that I would speak to it. I know that you reviewed some of that and we talked a little bit earlier, but I just wanted to make sure that you were good with me just speaking to it and then get some of their input so we can get the truancy policy updated and move forward.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
Okay, perfect. So I did provide the board with the current, a copy as well as you guys too, of the policy, the truancy policy, JH, and then also the procedures, which is JHR. So anything with the dash R or the procedures. So we had been looking at that and they have as well. And there were some suggestions, so they were great, thank you, that they sent us in an email, but I also printed it out for you guys as well. It's the chief pager from Farmington Police Department. So I guess really what we were thinking is just who can help develop some of this? So like, are you guys going to work in coordinate, like with the administrators? I know that you guys had mentioned some different ideas. So like, for example, under student absences and excuses, excuses, you said, like you talked about how it doesn't outline how the parents are going to call and be specific. And obviously, admin and you guys working in the school's day in and day out, like we would be looking to you for that advice. So what, you know, maybe some of your suggestions are. I know you talked about the fake emails, the email situation. I guess that's probably more middle school and high school, not so much that I leave you, although maybe. And so just, you know, what was the process in the past? Like, how was that addressed in the past? How did that come to light? How can we monitor it? You know, what were the consequences or how did you find that out? You know what I mean, in the past? So if we're, if we're going to still accept emails. I don't know, there were just, I just, we have some. You talked about it, like specifically stating that it should accept a handwritten note and that be required if we're not going to accept emails. And just, you know, is that realistic? And can a student then forge that? So and again, it's more, I'm not, it's not questioning. It's more like you guys know the rules that are coming in and out. You guys know the changes that are happening, especially at the court level so you can hold students, parents, guardians accountable for truancy. So there were just some questions around that. And it was basically, oh, the truancy you had talked about, the remote learning piece. So that's already a separate paragraph. A lot of times, in my opinion, it's already a separate paragraph. So I feel like, but the board can look at that. That's on page three, two, page two? Page two of the policy. So you guys had suggested that, you know, in the event that we, I hope we don't have to, resort back to e-learning, keep it in there. Again, in my opinion, it's already separate, so I feel like we could just leave it. I think there's a lot in policies that we don't see on a typical day and we don't see day to day, but it's still in there. So I guess I would just be looking for your suggestion, like, like where would, where do you suggest that if you put, is that?
I think because right now, for the most part, the kids are all back in school. So I mean, I, I don't see any issues with that being at the end of it as kind of like an addendum. If, if X happens, then we will resort to this one.
In the event of.
Behind the normal, regular, everyday procedures.
Okay. Okay, perfect, so.
When is the next policy committee meeting? Is there one set?
No, they've just been getting.
No, we've been just doing, so I guess, so those were just some of the questions and that was more just to bring up and I'm not going to go through every single, more of, more or less it's just, you know, are you guys and admin looking to develop some of these outlines, some of these?
So we don't normally write policies and especially whereas it's something that your staff is going to be implementing. Like, we don't mind, like, these are our suggestions just based on stuff that's going to influence what we take to court and how we have to address it as truancy officers. But for us to write a policy that more people are going to implement is kind of, we, like, these are just our suggestions. You could take them or not really because it's your show.
Well, and that, and that's why I asked when your next policy committee meeting was. I wonder, you know, like when we were doing some health-related policies, we brought the nurses in. You know, if we're going to, if we could take a little further look at this policy and invite one of the SROs or chief or whoever, both SROs if they can make it to the policy meeting as well as your building administrators.
Yeah.
You know?
And I know that you just kind of came up like at the last meeting. So we were looking at it and who you were guarding and we knew it was important to me. And so you guys could hold people accountable. So if we want, we can go ahead and just try to set something up so you guys can be there. That way we can go over those, some of those more specific outlines and timelines that you guys have just suggested and coordinate with, with administration. And then, I guess my question, Joel, was, so will this suffice for, because it says under parental notification of the truancy policy that the school board will place the item on the agenda for a public board meeting. Does it have to be specific or would this be considered like because policy was on there? Policy review? Or does it need to be specific to truancy?
Oh, to put the policy on?
Yeah.
What do you mean? This, put the specific policy on the agenda?
Yeah, so is any, in order to make any changes and adopt any, it says it needs to be placed on the agenda of a public school board meeting and then allow two weeks for public input.
Yeah, we've typically done that.
So I guess my question is, would this count? So if we then discussed, or do we have to have the final one?
No, it's, it can be on there as a first read and then we bring it back.
So this could be considered the first read? And then our two weeks will start ticking, correct? For any public input? Okay, so any public input, if you want to email me, feel free to. And then that way we can place it back on the agenda for the 19th? Perfect. And then that way, at the very latest, September 9th, our meeting on September 9th would be at the very latest, but I'd like to get it done before school starts, but, but if we need to tweak anything. Okay, so I'll get in touch with you guys, I'll get in touch with you then to see just what works best for you guys.
Yeah.
To go over that and then we can just kind of put our heads together so it can be nice, clean, finalized.
Perfect.
We'll give it to Katrina. Katrina, if you're listening.
Anything else?
That was as far as policy for this.
So, and again, I know that I gave you guys a really thick document to look at, but sorry about that. So some of the goals that we have for the program next year. We did a couple raffles last year and I think a lot of the families enjoyed it and stuff like that. So for us to be able to have positive interactions with the kid is, is a big goal for us because anytime something's wrong, we get called. Anytime someone's upset, we get called. But it's nice for us to have other reasons for being there and having other interactions with them that are positive. So the section on continual growth, if you guys have any questions or your opinions on that, when you guys take a look at that, feel free to shoot us an email because it would be really great for us to be able to grow this next year and be able to have more of those positive interactions with the kids instead of just, oh, they're here, what's wrong? So.
Right, right.
Okay, that's it.
I think, you know, if I may, I know Chief, you have something you want to add, but, you know, having been on the board for a long time and then having worked in the district prior to that, I, I feel like our SRO program now, as compared to wherever it's been in the past and whatever agency was involved in the past, I feel like we're like head and shoulders above where we've ever been. You know, it's due to leadership. It's due to consistent staffing. It's so nice to just see the same faces, you know? I mean, and to see you at games and to see you at all the various schools. I mean, that's just, it's just so.
Like, it's not a surprise. Like, they know when you're coming in.
It's just so reassuring, you know? I mean, you should feel, people should feel safe here, you know?
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
I think the thing I wanted to add is, I'm real interested in what maybe the superintendent and especially the school board may have for goals for the SROs for the 2024, 2025 school year. I think this is a good time to hear them, whether it's just dialogue back and forth or through email so we can implement them and I establish them as goals for them during their evaluation process. We want to strive to meet your goals, set new heights and new levels for this program. And I think it takes the district to come forward and give us some ideas or, because we get stuck in our own way of thinking.
Yeah.
And outside perspectives really help. I don't know if the school board had any right off the top. We'll be interested in through email.
I don't have anything off the top, but.
I don't know, I don't have anything off the top of my head. And I mean, you guys are the ones that are poops on the ground every day. So you're more, you know, you're better to speak of it than, than we are. We're, no news is good news, you know? So, I mean, if you guys, I don't know what you have outlined, I guess, for next year already. If there's like a living document or something.
We get some goals.
Well, yeah.
Oh, living document, yeah.
We have a live document. We have our staple things that we do.
Yeah.
Things we want to achieve. But again, I think it's important to reach out to school board members, parents of students, residents and things like that because they're all different perspectives.
Right.
For example, one may be, I would like to see more visibility during drop-off, pickup. You know, that is something that we try to enforce. But that may be on the top of your pile. Or it may be extracurricular activities and sporting activities or things like that pending. So how does, how does adjusting the schedule work to try to get them to be there and still be physically responsible? You know, we're in a unique situation. We're going into a new school year with about, you know, a month almost to really narrow down our operations plan and embed those goals to achieve it.
I mean, I think, I was just drawing down some things that were going through my head as you guys were saying that. I mean, me personally, as a board member and as a parent, I just think, for me, obviously, everything you guys are already doing, the safety, the truancy, the calls, all of that is important. But I think for, for me, it's really about building relationships, right? It's all about that trauma-informed, trauma-sensitive approach. Building those positive interactions, relationship building, not just with the students and staff, but, you know, with the community and with the family, which I think you guys do a great job with. You know, waving, you know, at drop-off or pickup. Just the visibility and being present, which is great. Like, when you go into the schools and even just seeing some of the pictures here, you know, when you're going in, you're reading, so that visibility. And just those proactive approaches, which you guys did outline too. Like I said, oh, I love seeing this. You know, we know that there's an uptick right before holidays and vacations and it's hard on a lot of kids for, and families for a lot of different reasons. So I think anything that we can do to be proactive there is great.
Do you find?
And then heyday, you need, do you need us to approve this?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so I remember last year, heyday, so they just, we had approved purchases, allowing them to purchase like the ducks and the books and stuff like that so they can be a part of it.
Yep. There's also, sorry, a change within the last couple of weeks of the cost of the coloring books because we actually had crayons donated. So it takes about like 115 bucks off of the cost of that.
Okay, so.
Why don't we run up to?
I'm just gonna. I was just looking, hold on, so 23.
Do you, while she's calculating, do you find that you're in one building more than the rest?
Honestly, it's a hit or a miss. It really depends. Some days, when something's going on in that building, it could be a ripple effect and then it could be one kid has an issue and then another one gets triggered by it. Or if there's an issue between multiple students, then we could end up there literally the whole day just unraveling what happened and what's going on. Sometimes during the holidays, the older kids are more aware of the hardship and the stuff that's going on. So usually around those times, middle schoolers kind of by the holidays, they get excited and being able to control themselves is a little bit different. So honestly, it really depends on what the situation is and what age group you're dealing with because they all react a little bit differently based on what's going on just because the maturity level and the realization of what's going on of certain things.
I wonder if I could like, this is just an idea, but it would take some planning, but maybe some sort of like a club or, well, like a, well, I mean, it could take place during lunch or recess or something, but I don't know, like maybe some sort of a club, like those kiddos that are struggling or even the kiddos who aren't struggling and, you know, mix them and bring them together. And I don't know, I don't know what that would look like, but just some sort of a, I don't know, like kind of like bonding, bringing them together, like you guys being a part of it, maybe a couple of their favorite, or not favorite teachers, but staff members who stick out or something. I don't know.
You're saying that enough allows us to say, great idea. Sit down and talk about it and it comes back up after.
I thought the presence at non, you know, at extracurricular activities was like the best I've ever seen. And, you know, doing things like participating in the JT tournament, that was so much fun, you know, to see the police out there. Whenever you lost, you were out there, you know?
I think it's important, the community.
Fine officers in blue are here. Their ongoing commitment and communication over the course of the school year and helping us to refine and revise our school safety plan. We're planning to roll out a revised set of flipbooks to all staff with regards to school safety. And we have plans over the course of the year to get some practice in place so that we can manage behaviors in a controlled situation so that if we have an uncontrolled situation, we can better manage those situations. So, thank you.
If you need a volunteer, let Stacy know.
Will do.
So she always says. All right, so this, what it is, and then round it up.
Make a motion.
Yeah. So I will go ahead and make a motion to approve up to.
Yeah, so I will go ahead and make a motion to approve, um, up to four hundred and fifty dollars to be, for the SROs to spend, on incentives for heyday of 2024.
Motion, or second? Second by Mrs. Clark, motion by Mrs. Doyle, discussion on that? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair might beg, there's two ways to go along, if it's we purchase it and reimburse the school with our monthly billing, or the board choose to have the finance director order it.
What's the most timely, yeah?
Okay. I mean, you guys know what you're.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I am here, Chief. I'm just on the spot about something totally different that, that is on our agenda, but I'd like you to weigh in, if you don't mind me putting you on the spot. The Recreation Department, um, now that the heyday is at the five hundred park, uh, is making a request to have, uh, we have a volunteer bus driver who's offered to sort of shuttle people, elderly people, what have you, to the park and back to their residences, which I, we can get into it further later on, but do you, have you, with, with the change in heyday, did you see a need for that?
Uh, last year, uh, we had an after-action review, and we took comments from the general public and people that participated in it. And one of them said the lack of handicap park. And it made them diff, made it difficult for them to get there, they had to venture down Pleasant Summer, green and lilac and things like that. So, we heard that, and they, there was a rainstorm session, um, with the group, um, how can we still incentivize handicap or elderly or other people that may, uh, struggle to, to walk, uh, to get there, and that was an idea that was brought up. If you can imagine the five hundred boys and girls club, it is no parking on, on those side streets, it really leaves downtown TD Bank, old police department, direct department, the old fire department, and the town hall. So, it does put a little bit of strain on people that I've seen at tennis events over the past nineteen years getting there. This may incentivize to have them still come. Hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, no, it does, it does. Okay, so, I, I, I originally assumed that, but until I saw a picture the other day, the parking lot at the five hundred is not used for parking, it's actually used for the event.
That is correct, so I guess you break it into two baseball fields. One is basically for the kids, a lot of kids' activities, they're free to roam around, they're in a fence, it's a safe supervised area with a lot of things for them to do. The other field is the vendors. In the parking area, you have the food trucks, and there will be parking just enough for the vendors, because they come in and they get to carry a lot of stuff out.
Yeah, I, I was wondering, so I didn't.
Yeah, until I saw a picture, so they, they're not really able to use the parking lot. Yeah, we're gonna discuss it later, but thank you for weighing in.
Hopefully that helps.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Anything else for Chief? Thanks for being here.
No, thank you guys so much.
Thank you. No, you did, I was just, didn't know how long your agenda was, and if I was at the end, I'd end up missing.
Usually public session's quick.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Financials.
Alright, so for financials, uh, just choosing to focus here on wrapping up June and getting out of last year, so I'll give a report on that, where we landed. And this is after all grants, um, have been reconciled and reported to the DOE, um, as well as all of our cash reconciled, uh, and approved by the treasurer. We ended at total revenue of seventeen million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-four cents. Total fund ten expenditures, thirteen million, seven hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents. We had an overage in our food service fund, so essentially an expense of a one hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars, sixty-seven cents. Fund twenty-two, which is our grants fund, total expenditures, two million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars. And that brings our total expenses to sixteen million, six hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and one dollars and five cents. That creates a disparity between the two, in the positive of eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars, seventy-nine cents, of which the board, uh, reserved encumbrances of five hundred thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. Leaves us with an estimated fund balance, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars, seventy-nine cents, to put towards our trust funds. Funded in order would be the bus CRF for a hundred and fifty thousand, our tech CRF for a hundred and fifty thousand, and the remainder, which is, I'm rounding to sixty-eight thousand, um, it's a little bit more, to the heating system replacement fund. And that's where we basically ended out from last year, so we didn't get everything we wanted, uh, but we'll make sizable donations to the trust funds that are first. Uh, this comes at a good time for the bus CRF, because we're, uh, here during a public hearing, expending some money for that, so we hope to replenish that in short order. I don't plan on making any more adjustments to the fund balance unless an auditor tells me to. Point of note, uh, last month in June, uh, we recovered, excuse me, well, we were reimbursed, or planned to be reimbursed, excuse me, for eight hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and one dollars, ninety cents of ESER III funds, which brings our total budgeted amount to about three point seven million out of three point eight million. I have to now go back through and find out what we haven't expended from what was in that budget, and see if we can scrape any more out of that, um, to put back into an allocation to budget through September thirtieth. So that will be some more work there, and one of our priorities. Our other priority would be getting caught up with July's reporting, and getting that to the board and to the treasurer as well. The DOE twenty-five is upon us, uh, that's due by September first, so we hope to have that finished with, um, our data for the year. I'm attending a NASBO offered guidance on the DOE twenty-five later this week on Wednesday. So it's a day out of the office, just to spend time with other VAs, receive guidance to, uh, go through that report, and that's at no cost, it's covered by my membership. And we'll start there, uh, for that, so wait, plan is to be on time filing with that, um, which marks a return to hopefully a period of normalcy for the school district. We're working on closing out the audit with Greg, I do not have an update today, uh, but Jim has just returned from his vacation, uh, and I'm sure he will be quick to get an update from Greg. Other than that, a couple shout-outs, I just want to give Kim McGlinchey, our new, uh, Director of Curriculum, a major shout-out. She helped us write a big ESER activity, uh, to address learning loss in short order, is about eighty thousand dollars worth of funding, um, to get equipment and curriculum here to address learning loss in children, um, recovering from the pandemic, or that were impacted by the pandemic. And she did that in a short turnaround, taking a lot of advice from a lot of people, and helping me, uh, personally as well, so thank you for that, Kim. Also, I'd like to thank Lori, who is our data manager, for getting a huge discount on our Power School Upgrade activity, um, and doing it timely enough for me to get it into the grant, and get her that discount, so that is another priority, uh, for us, so with the installation of this Power School Upgrade, we'll be able to, um, utilize a data dashboard and use analytics to proactively address student needs before they occur, um, introduce MTSS, um, guidance, uh, you know, really whatever's needed to help the child out ahead of time, and should play well into, um, what the schools are trying to do with their student success plans. So very proud of both of them and the work that they've done for us, and I thank you both. There's a couple other issues that just didn't make it onto this agenda, uh, but they are financially related, so I will speak to them, and then we'll get them on the next agenda for further review. The athletic director has brought a project to us for athletic equipment. There's a couple different offers here, quotes, research already done, so we'll drop that in your next folder, so you have time to review it. We're still working on funding, so it's not that urgent of a priority, um, it's only urgent in the fact that we want to get it done and accessible for students to use. That way, our athletes here in the district can, uh, enjoy better facilities to utilize, um, and hopefully, really help them up, up, up their game and create a little more pride in the school athletic program, so. That's that, the other issue is a, uh-huh, you're not gonna love this one, but it's a bus issue. There's another bus, Yell can probably speak to it, um, I forget what it needs, but it's, it's, it's a hefty repair, so. Yell, if you could just.
Here or there?
Oh, or over there.
Yeah, you can sit, too.
Well, I'll direct you to a different spot.
Yeah, if it's easier to sit, we just need you near, near a mic, so folks at home can hear you.
Took the wheelchair bus number fourteen in for, uh, the, for inspection. Well, it didn't pass because of rust, mirrors, and so forth. It's the, uh, you know, it's, it's our handicap bus. It needs about seventy-five thou, seventy-five hundred dollars to get it all fixed. And, I'm, and it, but it's old, she's a two thousand and ten. Low mileage still, but she's still, I don't know whether it's better to purchase a wheelchair, uh, handicap, or fix that one up.
Well, it's, there's, they're like the one that we're having the public hearing about, so I'm assuming the base cost is somewhere between eighty and ninety, and then the outfitting of the special ed equipment and.
This one here is to, you have to be a CDL driver, you can't, can't be just, you know, you have to have CDL. Now, they, they do have one, the newer ones are not CDL, they're handicaps, anybody can drive.
Do, can we explore IDEA money? Since it's a handicap, since it's a handicap, uh, it's, it's gonna be. That's one thing to look into.
Well, you're kind of dealing with, um, I'm dealing with, is vehicles that have not been serviced, completely serviced, oil changes and all that, they're gray. But to really go into it, like rust, uh, uh, paint chipped off, so now it's rusting, how do we get that fixed? I suggested, I've talked to Jim about it, uh, taking them in and having them undercoated to keep the rust out. They've never been undercoated.
Do you know what the price is on that, roughly?
I, no, I haven't checked into it, I'm, uh, gotta find out where they can do it. As far as, uh, automobile's not a problem, looking, but for a bus, trying to figure out, maybe, uh, Rochester Trucking can do it. I know that, uh, I talked to the Presios, and they said, yeah, maybe, maybe not, you know, but it's not gonna be cheap, because they have to clear all the rust and then spray it down. But it will save you the vehicle.
Can we maybe, for, for the next meeting, get some estimates?
I will do that.
The undercoating, and then, the seventy-five hundred dollars to fix the current issue.
With the handicap.
Right, is that, we've already gotten, is that an estimate we've already received?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Is there enough money in a repair line? Or is that depleted?
Yeah, I mean, it's probably okay now, you know, to do, to do it, and you don't, it's, it's under the ten grand, but I didn't want to just fire that off, you know, without, at least bringing it up.
I just, the reason I ask is because it, school's gonna be starting, and we definitely gonna need that, I mean, and even if we found funds to secure a bus, could we get it that quickly, I don't know.
Right, yeah.
You know?
Right.
So I guess maybe for the next meeting, if we can just get some different scenarios of what could work, what might work, and how quick we can get it done.
Right. So, we, um, number thirteen, the price that was quoted to me before went out the door, because they sold their transmission, so now it went up. So, and I, be honest with you, I sorely need it, because I, my outsourcing out of district is growing.
Right.
I managed to capture a SLC back, and I'm attempting to get all the others, but at the same token, I need those small vans to be able to transport.
Yeah, I think, can you stay though at the table, just because we're gonna eventually get to you again anyway, so you might as well stay right there if you don't mind? Any questions for Mac about financials? Audit, I mean, since we're, are we, do, any update on the, how, how he's doing?
So, Jim's, Jim's message to Greg was just, email Mac if he need anything while I'm gone.
Yeah.
And they haven't checked in with each other since he left, so.
Okay.
He hasn't, he doesn't send me the updates, he sends them to Jim.
Okay. You reach out to him, Jim, so that we can maybe, by the next meeting, we've got an idea, since that September date is approaching. Alright, uh, back to policy review, we've got, do we have, was that the only one?
No, um, I have a lot of.
Okay. That's right, you did.
Um, so Sharon is going to address and present the parent concern that we had, um, regarding names. And then I was going to present, um, some new policy suggestions around student health and excluding students, um, from school for illnesses, procedures, um, just some updating around that, and some new policies, um, that we should possibly take a look at, so Sharon, do you want to go first, or do you want me to go first?
No, I'll go first, I won't take your line, I don't think.
Okay, perfect.
Uh, we were just, just, we were discussing the idea of, um, a policy for, um, requiring names, um, to be as they are on a birth certificate, and that did not, that seemed to be not a good idea, in that we have a large number of children who go by other names, simply because they, their parents have always called them something other than what's on their birth certificate. So my suggestion was that we should create a simple form that goes home in August, for parents who want their child to be called by the name on their birth certificate to fill out, return it to school before school starts, so that, that information could be provided to the teachers of that child before the first day of school, and then they would know that that child needs to be called that particular name. It seems like the, the simplest way to deal with it.
And again, the, and the form would be, and the form would be, it, it wouldn't be mandatory, it would go home to all parents, um, and just, should a parent or guardian choose to fill that out and send it back?
Right.
Then that's fine, correct?
Right, right, that is, it would simply be a form, that if that is something that a parent desires, they would fill out the form and return it to the school. I think that the list will be very short. I don't think it'll be a long list.
It, it, but is that, that's more of a procedure than a policy?
It is, but.
I wouldn't even say it's a proceed, a procedure, I think it's more of a practice, like, just like forms.
Yeah. Like the first day of school paperwork.
Correct.
Bundle.
Right, it's just, it's exactly where.
Do we send it home with everyone, or do we send it home as the situation presents itself?
Nope, I think we send it home with a photo release, it's, I think it, I think it acts the same as a photo, you know, video release of that personal information, whether they want that.
Yeah, so everybody gets a chance.
Right.
It's optional if a parent wants it.
I mean, there are some kids that go by their middle names instead of their first names, so, I mean, I, my brother-in-law, first day of school,
Our name totally different.
Didn't know his name, didn't respond to his name, you know, when the teacher's, because he is used to going by his middle name, so.
Right.
You know, just things like that.
And that's true of a lot of kids.
Right.
I mean, to have a policy that says that all children we go by the name on their birth certificate, I think would open a bigger can of worms than having
Well, we can't legally, we, we can't change their name on their permanent record without a new birth certificate anyways, so.
And this didn't come lightly, like, we did a lot of research, and Sharon did a immense amount of research, so we reached out to other schools, we reached out to other districts, we researched other policies, we reached out to the New Hampshire School Board Association, they used to have, mm, something that was, it, it actually was the quite opposite, it was against, um, so wouldn't.
Yes, it was, it was.
But they actually took it down, they removed it, um, because it created
And, and most schools that had them removed it.
Legal issues.
Is this, is this procedure or paperwork something that other districts are using, that you found?
Sharon, can you, I can't speak to that.
I, I, I do not know of other districts, it was an idea I had that seemed to simplify the problem and address the. I, I, I do not know of other districts. It was an idea I had that seemed to simplify the problem and address this particular issue. It, you know, I don't know if any other district has that as a, a, something that they do at the beginning of the year. I know they do similar things. I mean, it was, was like not having kids in pictures, not having, um, certain people that can't contact kids. It, it falls into that category, I think.
And I think before we do anything, you know, Sharon and I had talked and I, I think the board would agree that, you know, before we do anything, obviously, if we came up with some sort of a form to send home on the first day of school, you know, we obviously need to see legal, legal pass out, legal advice.
Oh, I was just gonna say.
I mean, this isn't just something we're gonna just be like, ah, we're gonna do this.
Well, I appreciate your work on it because we, we have received a couple of emails from a parent who is, um, strong, has some strong opinions about this topic. I want that parent to know that we listen and, um, we've, we've looked into it and, and perhaps come up with a way that legal will say is a decent way to handle the situation. So, thank you for putting your time into that, both of you. We don't have anything to really decide upon tonight, so.
No, nope.
What else we got on the docket here?
Um. Sharon, do you want to come up with maybe just a draft of what you were thinking the form could look like at some point? Um, and then that way we could review it and then, I just, I don't want us to.
Yeah, I can try. I can, I can try to draft something together and I will, uh, send it to you because else it'll be gone at the next meeting. So.
Okay.
I'll send it to you so you can have an actual copy of it there.
Yeah, and then maybe we could even just, you know, email it, email it to Joel, you know, to the, to the board and then we could just send it over to legal after discussion, you know, to just get their input. That way at least there's some things in the works.
Right. And I, I mean, I think that if a simple, I'm thinking of keeping it as simple as possible.
Absolutely.
Nothing complex.
Nope.
Yep. Less is, sometimes less is more.
I think so.
Yeah. Perfect.
Okay.
Awesome. All right, um, so I did make a folder and I shared it with all of you, um, policies to review. Um, so Sharon and I and, uh, Jim, the school nurses, I think that was everyone. Mac, you were there for, no, you, were you there for part of it? No, you weren't. Jim was. Um, so the school nurses, um, it's been something that staff and the school nurses have been, um, they brought up several times over the, the past school year and it was just, um, the fact that they felt like there were no policies in place that really could hold them accountable or hold parents accountable per se for student health, excluding students from school for illnesses, procedures for keeping them home when they're sick, um, and if there were things in place, it wasn't consistent, um. So, we met, um, and we reviewed some current policies and then we also looked into draft policies at the New Hampshire School Board Association at that level as well as several different, uh, school districts within New Hampshire. Uh, and from that, what we did is we took a look at the two, um, policies. So policy JLCG, which we do not have. So this would be a new policy, um, to review and take a look at for a first read. And then policy EBCG. And you'll see that both of them also have procedures that go along with them in the folder. Um, so JLCG is really guy, uh, so if you go into JLCG, let me just, I want to get there too. Uh, this is regarding, um, exclusion of students who present a hazard. So this is something that a lot of other schools and school districts have. So it's just talking about when a student should be excluded from school when they're exhibiting symptoms of a contagious or communicable disease, um, illness, I should say, or otherwise a hazard to him or herself. Um, so you'll see that this kind of outlines, and again, we took this, it's pretty straightforward. We took it from New Hampshire School Board Association's um, recommendations as well as what a lot of the other districts had. And again, a lot of the other districts that have it, it's, it's this exact one. So I think they just use that New Hampshire School Board template. If you go to the, hold on, JLCGR, these are procedures. So Sharon and I actually had a really hard time finding any kind of guidelines for parents, um, within the handbook of keeping students home. Um, and the school nurse actually did send something over. So currently guidelines for sending and keeping ill students home from school that we have, um, there were just, we felt like there needed to be some changes. That way it would be in alignment with the policy. And if that's the case, we would want to make sure that all of the handbooks are updated, um, to a procedure. That way these procedures are outlined and not just guidelines. So changing that word guidelines to actual procedures. Um, and the one spot that we were able to find it, that, well, the school nurse found and sent it to us was page fifteen of the student registration packet at Valley View. So these were just procedures. And again, this was in collaboration with what we kind of research, not kind of, what we actually researched online and what the school nurses felt, um, was appropriate. A lot of them stayed the same as the current guidelines that we had with the exception of, um, you'll see one outlined in yellow. Um, so it's just keeping a child home that's sent home from school, um, and how long they should remain home, um, which would be until they are symptom-free without medication for twenty-four hours, except as stated above for situations such as lice and pink eye. Um, and then there was nothing in there as far as excused absences. So excused absences were a big concern for parents because parents felt like, well, if my kid has to stay home, then they're not going to be excused. So the school nurse felt, they felt like something, a statement in there under excused absence, um, with nurse's dismissals, the nurse may excuse the absence the day, the day of, um, as well as determined by the school nurse after speaking with parent or guardian at the building, in the building administrator. Um, the rest pretty much stayed the same. Um. Any questions on those?
Just a minor point of order. Um, we're looking to finalize the family and student handbook. And we hope to have that for you for the next school board meeting.
Perfect.
So I'm hoping between now and then, as the committee does its work, we'll be able to incorporate those changes.
Awesome.
Does the board want to take action on these as a tonight? Or at least as a first read and?
Yeah, as a first read.
Yeah, I think so.
I'll entertain that motion.
Yeah. Um. Do we want to, sorry, um, do we want to approve as a first read for the final at the next meeting?
Yeah, do we have, if it's a first read, do we, do we need a motion for that?
Typically.
Okay.
I thought we only did finals.
It kind of gets it on the table and, yeah.
I couldn't, I couldn't remember. We haven't done it in a half minute, so.
Yep. Yep.
Um, all right, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the policies as presented for, sorry, I just pulled them down.
You have the policy.
JLCG.
J, JLCG.
And JLCGR.
Yeah, and what about EB?
Well, so.
Or they go together, right?
Well, they go together. Do you want to do it all as one or do you want to do them separate?
I was just gonna list them all out because they're all first reads.
All first reads.
Yeah, perfect. Yep.
So it'll be JLCG, JLCGR, EBCG, EBCGR, uh, to approve as first reads.
Motion by Mrs. Lozey to approve those as first reads. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Parker. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And this will go along well with our student handbook.
Right, yep. And then there was only just one other, just under health services. So current policy JLC, which is student, um, health services and JLCD, which is administering medications to students. The nurses, uh, one nurse in particular had suggested updating the wording, um, under first aid, emergency first aid, as well as emergency administration of medications. So, um, to include a statement regarding Narcan. I personally, um, I mean, I could go either way. I personally don't feel like there actually needs to be a specific statement regarding Narcan. Um, because as it reads right now, it says a new, the school nurse or other properly designated personnel may administer other medications to students in emergency situations provided such personnel has had all trainings as required by law and is consistent with the provisions of the board policy JLCE. Um, and then it also, under emergency first aid, um, it states the same thing. And then it, but it also says, uh, such medication may also be administered in an emergency situation if a student's medical action plan has been filed and updated with the school nurse to the extent required by law. Um, I feel as though school nurse or other designated personnel can administer any other medications to students in emergency situations provided that that personnel has had trainings required by law. Fits within that, the Narcan.
It covers it.
I mean, it covers it. So I don't personally feel like we need to add a specific.
You can walk in and, you, you can administer Narcan.
Yeah, oh, no, I know, right? Without training, right?
Know what I mean, like that, right.
I mean, and they have it, so.
Anybody can do it.
Right, I just wanted to bring it up because it was something that they.
What was the nurse's thoughts and reasoning behind being specific to that, the name of that? Did, do you remember?
I honestly don't know. And I did email them and I know that they're not working over the summer.
But do you know why, Sharon?
They just seem to want to have it specifically mentioned. I, I don't really understand what, what it was other than the fact that they repeatedly asked us to put something in about administrating.
We asked, and we asked for suggestions like what that statement may look like so we could take a peek at it and present it to the board. And I also followed up in an email actually recently when you and I met a couple of weeks ago, Sharon.
Right, yes, you did.
And didn't receive any, anything back. Again, I know that it's summer vacation, so they're probably not checking.
So these are current policies anyway.
Yeah, those are current policies. I just wanted to bring it up since we were, it was in the realm of the health and wellness side of the whole policy.
If it comes up again and, and, and one of the nurses or all the nurses want to be a little more specific as to their reasoning, we can, we can certainly take that up and, and make adjustments. So.
Okay.
Yes.
In my ongoing conversations throughout the school year, a lot of what has now thankfully formulated into the work that Nicole is doing, they, it started out as general observations that were shared with me early on in the school year in the hopes that some changes would be made. So I think it speaks volumes to not only our staff, but to you as a board that we, we listen and that we're doing what we're doing. So thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. That's it for policy?
Did, did we have a vote on that?
No, sorry, so that was.
I don't think, on that one? Oh.
I don't, I think we were still in.
On the first reads?
No, we didn't, no, did we? I just wanted to make sure.
We did that vote, yeah.
Okay.
Right, we voted on the first read?
Yeah. I just wanted to double check.
Okay.
And we'll present them as final at the next meeting.
Same conversation, I just mean, sorry, wrap it up, sorry.
All right, let's go down to new business. Um, uh, Gil, I'm gonna kick it off with you to have a conversation about the developments with the Hontown Bridge and how that's going to adjust some routes.
Well, we, uh, they keep changing the dates.
Of when it starts?
Yes.
Okay.
It's August fifteenth today.
Right now it's August fifteenth?
Correct.
Yeah, it moved up. It was the fifth, uh, tenth, the ninth, then so forth.
Okay.
And so we don't know. But we, we're gonna go ahead and make our changes to the routes.
Right.
Um. We're, I already got, uh, the red bus is gonna be taken up going through River and, and picking up the part where before the bridge of Hontown and taking them out. Picking them up. Blue is gonna continue on its own route. And there's no, no change on the purple. Purple will stay the same. Unless I get another driver, then I can add another route. But other than that, the only one that's changing as far as, uh, students and route is the red route.
If I'm watching from home, and again, I would know more about it because I would know what the red route is, but I don't. Can you just tell us what the red route looks like now and what it will look like?
Okay, right now it's, it goes up Spring Street and then, uh, goes down, uh, towards, uh, Rochester and picks up kids on eleven.
Okay.
Up to ten, up to the, where the, uh, right it is.
Okay.
Then turns down Tappan and then goes up, uh, uh, Central and right at the corner of eleven and Central, there's about five kids he picks up.
Okay.
And then proceeds on over to Trotting Park for one student and then hangs a ride again and goes back down, uh, Route eleven, picking up kids there, then goes up, uh, Meeting House to the other side of Ten Rod, picks up there and then contin- comes back down, goes up on eleven, picks up all those kids there, comes back down and so forth. What's gonna happen with this new route, he will be going down eleven, up Ridge, down to Hontown, turning back up and then come over, pick up those kids that are there at River and then turn Tappan, just, just follow the, what he's already had. So.
How will this be communicated to families?
I was gonna send an email to the parents as soon as we find out who the parents, who it affects.
Yeah.
And, and if I can, get on, uh, Facebook.
Yeah.
And say, this is what's gonna happen.
Will it have projected times? You know, it's gonna alter some of the times for pickup a little bit?
For red ride, yes, it would. And the same with, uh, the, uh, blue. Because she has to travel up Ridge, hit, uh, to, go past, uh, into, uh, New Durham, which is, uh, I think, uh, Berry Road to be able to pick up, uh, Ten Rod again and then continue her route. But the rest, after that, the rest is, the ways.
Have we done a run-through yet?
We're doing a run-through as soon as I get all my drivers together.
Yeah. Might I suggest that when we do a run-through, we, we do some timing?
Yes.
And I'm sure you've already thought of this, but I'm just thinking if I'm a parent, I'm going, oh, wait a minute, what time is my kid gonna be picked up now? So we can kind of really iron that out as much as we can. And I know with the new route and school, there's all kinds of things that happen that
We did that last year.
Could create that not to happen.
Yeah, we did that last year.
Yeah.
Let, they took, the drivers took the buses out and timed it with the buses, not just with the car, with the buses. And came up with a five to ten minute.
Yeah.
Lead time.
Well, in Ken Dickey and the, and the town, the board of selectmen were, were very proactive in letting us know as soon as that it was, the plan was, you know, I mean, I, I guess they probably can't control exactly when it starts. I'm sure that's up to whoever's doing the work. But, um, they reached out multiple times to say, you know, you're gonna have some bus route changes. So.
Right.
As long as we get that out there to folks and we communicate well, I think it'll be smooth, as smooth as it can be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a nice.
Yeah.
According to what I understand, the plan is to take that bridge that's on Hontown, move it over to River.
I had heard that, yeah.
And that'll also give us a, a better roundabout rather than having to turn about, just pick up the River kids and just go around and go.
Yeah.
A little minor change.
Okay.
But we will set up time and not only once, maybe twice before we start.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
While I get you here, Gil. Next on the agenda is, um, next on the agenda is the, uh, request uh, from the Park and Rec Department. Erica Rogers, uh, did, uh, talk with Stacy recently. You had mentioned it, uh, at the last meeting. Um, and let me just pull this up. Basically, it was a written request and this, I brought this up earlier with Chief. We're requesting use of a van from the school transportation department for heyday August seventeenth from ten to two. We're looking to have people transported from the downtown area and downtown parking to Summer Street Ballfields. The reason for this request is to help people that may have issues with walking so they can enjoy heyday. Kim B., I'm assuming that's Kim Barrell.
Yes.
Has volunteered, uh, her time to drive that desk.
Yes.
Um, and you, you're in support of this?
Yes, I am.
You'll be using one of the buses. Uh, and we questioned at the last meeting about use of facilities. about use of facilities for fireworks, which has been taken care of as well. Um, and we don't have to take action on that, um, but we, we do need to take action on utilization of, of a bus. It's one bus, right? It's gonna be one bus.
It was a, a van?
They asked for a van, they asked for the van, and our, the big vans, their clearance is higher. In other words, they would have to step up, and the, well, the, and there's, there is, they don't have any rails to grab hold of, so it'd be difficult for elderly to get in. So my suggestion, we have a bus number four, which is a thirty-seven passenger bus, it's half a bus, and use, utilize that, this way they can get up on the bus, get a chair. I was hoping to use the, uh, wheelchair to provide people with wheelchairs to get in, but since it's in the shop, I like, that's out of the question.
Well, this is better than, than nothing.
Yeah.
And Chief outlined what some of the obstacles were. Do I have a motion to approve this request?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Lozey?
To approve the use of rec, the rec, to use the bus for heyday.
Second by Mrs. Johnson, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. The review for, the review of Farming tonight's student handbook is noted by Mr. Doig, will take place at the next meeting on, uh.
Amber just emailed us a copy of the, um.
Yeah, uh, so we'll do that at the next meeting. Um, as far as I know, we don't have any other non-publics to go into, because we were able to take care of the nominations and resignations, uh, because we had time prior to the public hearing, and I don't believe we need the personnel at this time, yes.
Can I share a piece of positive information with the public?
Sure.
And the board?
Yeah.
Um, uh, several months back, we introduced the idea that, um, we wanted to move to electronic enrollment, in sync with the paper-based means by which we do business now, and it's with the understanding that we're not eliminating the paper-based product. But, um, the online enrollment work that's being done, first of all, in support, by the families at home who've enrolled, thank you for that, um, as well as our administrative assistants and Lori Shagnon and Sue Johnson at the SAU, uh, I'm happy to say that, um, we'll be looking to open the parent portal on Wednesday, August seventh, and in April, we had six hundred and eighty-five parents who did not have Power School access to the portal, and as of today, I'm happy to report that we only have two hundred and eighty-five families left, um, who, who can, uh, sign up for access. And in addition to that, we'll be looking to support, um, access to being able to enroll online through the open houses that we'll be supporting in early September. So it's, it's nice to see that this has taken off in the way that it has, and, uh, the hard work that's been done by everyone behind the scenes, uh, has been valuable, and it's nice to see that we're in a place like this right now, and I thought you should know that, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, uh, I don't see anybody present here, but I'll ask one last time if there's anybody that has public participation or would like to speak to the, would like to speak to the, uh, subject matter in the public hearing. Okay, hearing done, I'm gonna call the public hearing and close the public hearing at seven nineteen PM. And, uh, our next meeting is August nineteenth, two Mondays from now. School is right around the corner, folks, it's the happiest time of the year for all you parents. Um, so our next meeting will be August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, we don't have to entertain a motion to go into non-public, so I will thank you, those of you that are watching from home, and those of you who showed up here this evening, and I will take a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn by Mrs. Parker.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lozey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good night, folks.
Good night.